Good evening, I'd like to call the Monday, June 13th meeting of the Blue Springs Planning Commission to order. If I could get everybody to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will run through tonight's agenda. Item one will be the consent agenda. Item two is a public hearing on a conditional use permit. Item three is a special presentation. Item four is a presentation on community for all ages. And then item five is other business and then adjourn. So with that, I would entertain a motion for consent agenda approval.
Salute.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Fairbanks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two is a public hearing for conditional use permit CUP-05-16-5339. I will open the public hearing. And the applicant has requested a continuance to the, where is it? The Monday, June 27th meeting, so I would entertain a motion for that.
Salute.
I had a motion from Commissioner.
All second.
Okay. And a second from Commissioner Phillips. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That public hearing will be continued to the June 27th meeting. Now, I get to move about and go off the podium here and make a special presentation. Is my mic working?
Yes.
Latasha McCall, could I have you come forward with me, please? Latasha's served on the Planning Commission from April 2012 to 2016, and was a valuable member and we're going to miss her very much. We were sorry to see her go. So on behalf of the Blue Springs Planning Commission, I have a plaque that says, "In recognition of your leadership, dedication, and commitment, City of Blue Springs Planning Commission, April 2012 to 2016."
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so you remember us in your time on the commission, we have your name placard to take home with you. Anything you'd like to say, words of wisdom?
No, I've enjoyed my, I've enjoyed my time. I've learned a lot and made new friends and, you know, I'm sorry I, you know, had to leave, but I've got some other things I want to do. So it's going to take a lot of my time up, but as I was sitting out there in the audience, this is my first time sitting in the audience, I was like, "Oh, thank God, they're right there." You know, so, you know, it's sad, so I'm definitely going to miss all of you and the every other Mondays, so, but I wish you all the well, everybody well. And, you know, I'm on LinkedIn with people, so we'll just stay in touch. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you, and we wish you good luck, and I understand we may see you before us at some point in time with some...
Perfect.
Thank you. Thanks.
Takes just a little bit longer to get around this large than the old one. I had to run. Next item on the agenda is our Community for All Ages presentation, and Kathy Boyer Schussel with KC Community for All Ages, or she is the KC Community for All Ages Project Manager. And is she going to stand over there, or are you going to start?
I'm going to start.
Oh, okay. Mr. Hawley's going to start, but I don't think your microphone's on.
Thank you. I'm going to start with just a brief introduction, and just to kind of let you, as Commissioners, know where the city is at this point with the Community for All Ages Initiative. So it was in February that we took a resolution to the City Council, and the Council passed that resolution supporting the Community for All Ages Initiative, as well as supporting the Community for All Ages Recognition Program with charge to move forward with that program. And so in April of this year, we did submit an application for a bronze level. Kathy will talk more about what each level is, but in short, the bronze level is an awareness level. It's the level where you are trying to make the community aware of this initiative. It's a non, it's a never-ending level, so to speak, because even as you move forward with the other levels, you still want to continue to put that awareness out there, try to introduce more people within the community to this initiative. In June, we were notified that we did in fact receive the bronze level. And from that point forward now, we will slowly start to work on the silver level, which is the assessment level. That's the level where we will put a, eventually put a group of individuals together from the community. I'm certain the commission will be included, as well as the council. And we will start to go through a checklist of where the city stands right now in addressing some of the issues that are related to the Community of All Ages Initiative. So with that brief history, I'm really excited and happy to introduce Kathy Schessel Boyer. She is the Project Manager for Communities of All Ages Initiative with the Mid-America Regional Council. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you so much for inviting me to present to the Planning Commission tonight. I don't know if any of you were here the night that I presented to the City Council, I guess Jim said that was in February. So if you are, thank you for your patience as we go through these first few slides, because they're the same that were, that was a part of the presentation to, to the City Council. So the presentation tonight is really going to, the first part, our demographics, and first of all, can you hear me way over there? Is to set up the demographics of the age wave that's occurring really across the world, and the Kansas City region is no different. And then we're going to talk more about the program that Jim started to talk about and Blue Springs' involvement in that. And actually, when I first started in this space about eight years ago, this was new. The statement from an AARP survey talking about the demographic was brand-new. Many of you have probably already heard this, that in 2011, the first boomer turned 65, and on the first day of January, first boomer turned 65. And so the estimation is that approximately 8,000 to 10,000, and I think by now we're probably to the 10,000 boomers are turning 65 every day, and that will continue until 2030. So that's a lot of folks that are, that are reaching the age of 65 on a, on an annual, or on a daily basis. So with the Missouri senior population, so you see the state into the 2010 and 2030, and as you move from the 2030, it shows the counties in yellow that will have a 25 percent, at least 25 percent of their population will be over the age of 65. Now, Missouri's state maps are not as dramatic as Kansas, because when we do this presentation on the Kansas side, I think that there's probably less than 10 counties that are not yellow. So whereas Missouri is showing significant increase in yellow, it really does depict that Missouri is showing similar demographic changes across the country, that it's having much more of a population, it's shifting with what's referred to often as the age wave across the country. This is the Kansas City metro data, so Jackson County is showing that, well, all of the counties in the nine-county mark area, Mid-America Regional Council's area, they're all increasing. Johnson County is having the greatest increase of 144 percent, but Jackson County by almost 57 percent. So we're going from national to state to region. And we're going to show a couple graphs here that really kind of show that the Kansas City's metropolitan area is becoming more of a region of all ages, even though there is an increase of older adults. As we span across this, it's going to show that really it's, it's all ages, which is why we called our initiative KC Communities for All Ages, and not necessarily that it's an older adult initiative. So the next two, so I'm going to show this slide and then this next one. But is the boomers, which are really kind of the pig and the python, looking at the 1990, and this is census data, that kind of shows that they're moving up the snake. And so that as opposed to originally on, when you look at graphs like this, generally speaking, the bottom is the largest with more kids, but with the aging of the boomers, you probably have heard this, the pig and the python, that would be what 1990 looked like. But projecting forward to 2030, pretty much the age groups are, it's beginning to look more like a stovepipe, as opposed to more at the bottom, a bulge in the middle, and so that in 2030, we're looking at really communities that are representative of all ages. This is a slide that shows Blue Springs. It's a 10-year comparison of 2010 to 2020. So it shows the 50-plus, so with the green bar is the increase of those over the age of 50. So you can see that pretty much that there's going to be an increase across the different age groups, starting at 50 and then on up to almost 100, or 85-plus. But I also want you to look at the middle graph, because what we're seeing in this, in age-friendly community work, there are striking similarities between the preferences of boomers and millennials. And so as communities are beginning to look at, are we prepared for a tremendous increase of more older adults in our communities than we've ever had, in history, actually, it's what communities and what Blue Springs is doing is, is not so much looking at how are we doing our planning and our discussions around more older adults in our community, but the middle, the millennials, which actually outnumber the boomer population. Boomer population is estimated at 78 million in the, in the country. Millennials are actually outnumber boomers by several million. I think it's somewhere like 84, 85 million. So as knowing that there are preferences in housing and transportation and lifestyle between boomers and millennials, cities such as Blue Spring that are addressing this now in preparation for adjusting and accommodating the needs and interests of older adults, they're really creating a community that will attract and retain the millennials. So it's really a next-century issue, as opposed to just the next 30 years while the boomers age. I once heard, it's the CEO of a national organization that deals with aging, who was saying that, that what he hears is, well, let's just wait for the boomers to die off, and then we can just go back to the status quo. But really, with the aging of the millennials, when the first boomer, when boomers do start to die off, as we will, I'm a boomer, so I can say that, the first millennial will be turning the age of 65. So it really is looking at creating communities that will accommodate older adults so that they'll, they'll stay in the communities across their lifespan. So what does this mean for cities? When six, eight years ago, when, when age-friendly communities, I don't know, did, if any of you have even heard the term age-friendly communities six or eight years ago, I would imagine by now you have at least heard, heard about age-friendly community work. Most communities felt like they weren't prepared. So that was the question that led to creating age-friendly community initiatives, as a way to help cities, elected officials, planning commissions, and other commissions look at, how do we need to be prepared, since this is the first time perhaps ever that we'll have more older adults in our communities? So it really impacts every aspect of city departments, city functioning, and city functionings. It will touch everything. So we received, Kansas City Mid-America Regional Council received, we were one of five communities across the country to receive a community agenda grant, and the AGE of Agenda was capitalized to kind of highlight that this was an aging initiative. And again, we were only one of five regions across the country to participate in this, and this allowed us to develop this age-friendly community program. We, it was a three-year project. The first year, we developed a toolkit, of which Jim will have a supply of those toolkits for, for anyone who's interested. And it also then led to a checklist with, which we're going to talk about a little bit more. And the communities that we piloted this program in, which just as FYI, were Mission and Prairie Village on the Kansas side, and Gladstone and Raytown on the Missouri side. When we asked how to continue to implement and continue the momentum in their communities, it's probably no surprise that their question was, well, what's in it for us? If we're going to do this, what's the benefit back to us? And so that led us to organize, and then we piloted this, the recognition program in this, in four cities again, so that cities can be recognized for their efforts in having discussions and really looking more strongly and intentionally about what this means to have more older adults. So we have developed then this recognition program that was inaugurated last year, and there were four communities that received recognition, and this next time around, there are six that will be receiving recognition. So the checklist, which was guided by the work that's done by the World Health Organization's Age Friendly Network, that we, we looked at their work, piloted this checklist in four communities, and whereas the World Health Organizations, they have eight age-friendly domains, all four communities recommended that it be squished down into six. So as Blue Springs and all of the other communities in the Kansas City region are, that are currently involved in this program, these are the six topics that, that will be addressed. And I might add that whether the initiative is called livable communities, lifelong communities, age-friendly communities, ours is communities for all ages, we're all looking at the same topics, because transportation, housing, public outdoor spaces and buildings, community health services, and how we engage our older adults and really citizens of all ages, and how we communicate with them so that they're less isolated, they're all components of any age-friendly community initiative. This is just a Kansas City homegrown project here. And we'll talk about the checklist in a little bit. Although I will go back to that, the checklist, some of the questions, as Jim mentioned, that there'll be a committee or a group that'll be delegated to actually do the self-assessment. Some of the questions that, that will be asked, for example, with public outdoor spaces and buildings, will be, are cities' parks, walkways, and buildings designed to be accessible and available to residents of all ages and abilities? And, and is it too soon to talk about, Jim, the charrette that may be?
No.
So AARP Missouri, in partnership with Communities for All Ages, has offered to fund two universal design park charrettes this year, and Blue Springs is one that is going to be, in fact, for the first guinea pig on this. And the date hasn't been set yet, it'll be sometime over the summer.
Yeah, we're looking, we're tentatively looking, I think it's July.
Okay, a hot day in July for an outdoor, although most of the work is done inside in air conditioning. But it's, it's an opportunity for cities that are looking at, at parks to bring in a variety of community stakeholders, to envision, what, what do we want in this park so that it's accessible and available to residents of all ages and abilities? And so that's going to be in July, and then there, the other one on the Kansas side is Roland Park. But it's a way, again, of being intentional in discussions and in activities about what does it mean so that our parks, where we're used to having ballfields and soccer fields and picnic benches and, and I'm not sure what they're called, where you put a, there's a term for it, and I'm blanking on it, pavilion, those things. But perhaps there's not been so much of an idea or discussion about, well, what if someone is in a walker? What if we are going to have an increase of folks in wheelchairs or walkers, or we'll have mobility issues? Are parks really accessible and inviting to them? So in July, did you say a date?
Yeah, we're tentatively looking at July 12th or 13th in that neighborhood, and the area that we're going to be looking at is an area within Greg Grounds Memorial Park, and it is, it is right at the point, if that makes any sense to folks who've been out there, right next to some private land where a developer is currently exploring some options with. So that, that's what it is, and we'll certainly send you an invitation, and if you'd like to participate, we would love to have you.
And actually, being that, one of the cool things is for recognition cities that are participating in this, we, we go to those cities first to ask for their participation. So we're really grateful that Blue Springs has agreed to be the first one to do this. So for housing, the kinds of questions, and there are many, but do we have housing options? Do we have codes and ordinances, which I guess is the purview of this committee, that will allow for accessory dwellings and cohousing and tiny houses and, and other kinds of housing options that we've, we've not had to look at today? But going forward with helping people remain in their home, you've heard of the saying, I'm sure, aging in place, which is the ability to remain in your home for however long that it's safe to do. And 90 percent, no matter what the survey is, 90 percent typically is the average that will say older adults want to stay in their home, as opposed to move into an age-segregated home, or if health declines and they have to move to assisted living, they're into nursing. So by far, the vast majority of older adults are saying they want to stay in their own home for as long as possible, or if they do decide to move, most are moving into multi-generational neighborhoods. So the, so one of the questions will be, do we have housing options, or is that at least even on our, our vision, or on our, on our list to consider what that means for us? For transportation and mobility, do your cities, is their public and private transportation options safe, affordable, and available? And I know Jim is, is very involved in the Eastern Jackson County Coalition for Communities for All Ages, it's a mouthful, but one of their priorities is transportation, to look at upping the game of transportation in Eastern Jack, and I know that Jim is, is really involved in that work. So those, so for each of these checklist items, there's a variety of questions that groups, that cities, residents, commissions, city councils will begin to look and, and discuss, to help look at the future and creating a, a community that will work for everyone along the lifespan. So the bronze level, which you all have, which Blue Springs has, has achieved, and the presentation is this Friday at Roland Park Community Center, I don't know if Jim, if you want to go to that, let Jim know. And that basically is the awareness level. And communities across the country that are doing age-friendly community work, and Kansas City is no exception, it's very, it's essential to start off with just increasing awareness of residents, commissions, and elected officials of what this means. So much of this presentation to talk about the demographic shift and what this means for the community, some of our newer communities are doing resident surveys, and others do focus groups, and to get the input from residents about what they think is important to be a part of a community for all age, as, as they remain in the community. So you have achieved the bronze level, and you've met all of the criteria, one of which is, if you don't know, on the city's website is a section devoted to communities for all ages. And Jim, or at least someone on staff, is going to be keeping that updated with reports and, and Blue Springs' progress. If not, he is, you will now that I, that I said that, that was going to happen. So next steps, that there, it's completed, Blue Springs, through the council, made a commitment to participate in this program. You've achieved the bronze level recognition, you're about to begin the silver level recognition, which we're going to talk about just momentarily. And we have a couple optional ways that cities can continue to learn about what this means for, for Blue Springs. We have a professional network that's comprised of elected officials, commission members, and staff of all departments that attend workshops on typically their topics in the checklist, just doing a little deeper dive in what that means, and what are tangible activities and practical tools that as you go back into your community that you can do, and I know Jim and Scott, have you, I know that Blue Springs staff and some of your elected officials have attended that. And then every other month, we have representatives from the 12 current cities that are participating in this program get together as kind of a peer support group, to talk about what are the challenges and what's really working well. And that's been exceedingly popular and very helpful to the 12 cities that, that are involved in this. So the silver level and the requirement to achieve that, and we've had two cities right now that have, that have achieved this, Gladstone and Mission, is to go through the checklist, and I think in your packet is the entire checklist, which we're not going to go through tonight, you'll be happy to hear. And, but it's to do, nonjudgmental, as the, the group, whatever that is that's assigned to do this, will go through every policy and every action. Staff, I should say, will ahead of time go through the policy section and document, do you have a policy or one that's similar to the one that's in the checklist, or do you not? And then there's a variety of actions, do we do this in Blue Springs, or do we not, or do we do something similar? There's no judgment attached to it, it's either we do or we don't. And then it's issued a report at the end of that, and that's the silver assessment. What we've learned, however, though, is that as communities go through this, when we piloted it, that simply by going through bit by bit the checklist, that it, it results in very robust discussion on the part of the group that is, that is doing that assessment. We don't have this policy, but why not? Or, we're not doing this action, but why aren't we doing it? I think that that would really be helpful. So that shows up in the report, and then it goes to whatever committee or commission to, to look at that a little bit more deeply, to determine whether that should be added as a policy, or whether there's a, a partner in the community, which I should say that when this was piloted, one of the most, probably, probably the biggest surprise for the city elected officials and staff was, and, and as you go through the checklist, cities aren't responsible for everything in that checklist, but it gives the opportunity to think about, who are your community partners? Can Boy Scouts be tapped in for the, those that are working on their Eagle Scout projects to make park benches, or to, to load them into parks? Is there the county health department that could help us do health screenings at City Hall? That would be a part of, it's not our responsibility, but how can we really be more available and accommodating to our residents by partnering with other organizations to do the checklist items? So the silver level really is, I'm making it sound very simple, but it really is just doing assessment of the checklist and writing a report, and then documenting the discussion that emerges. And I can promise you, there will be a lot of discussion with the pilot communities and the two that have achieved this level. There's been a tremendous amount of, of thinking leading to action. And then the final level, well, it's really not final, it's the, the next level, is the gold level, where cities incorporate an age lens in one of their major city plans. We have one city, Gladstone, that just has implemented or has, has adopted and integrated an age lens to their revised comp plan. And I think most are doing either a park plan, or a comp plan, or a new strategic plan. So that is the gold level. So I guess there's questions. Didn't realize I was going to go through that so quickly.
One of the things I'd like to add is that prior to us really moving forward with, with the program, we went through the checklist, the checklist, for instance, and we were amazed at how much stuff we think that we are doing within the community right now. So that was, that was one of the things that was kind of a, you know, a learning moment that we said, hey, you know, a lot of this, it looks like we're already doing, and we already have programs set up, whether they be with partners or whether they're already occurring and how. So we, we think you may have a good start at this.
Great. I was just going to say if anybody had any questions for you.
I think really the three, out of piloting the program and those that have gone to this point, it is that it's reassuring to know that you're already doing a lot of this. And you can see this is the first one with the policies and actions. But maybe it's just that the age lens hasn't been applied as thoroughly as it might have been. And then the realization of partners that are there to help you. And then the third is that just the robust discussion that occurs through that, through the self-assessment process is really hard to describe. But I'm in the process right now of facilitating Liberty Missouri is doing the assessment. And they have a task force that has every department head, and every city is different. So when I say this, I'm not saying this is what Blue Springs will have to do, but it's every department head, there's a couple elected officials, there's a handful of residents, and the director of their health department. And we've done this one, the public outdoor spaces and buildings. And the conversation is really hard to describe because it's very robust, there's a lot of enthusiasm. But the participation and engagement of residents is really important because staff might think, well, we're doing this just fine and we're really proud of what we're doing. But it's the residents who provide the added encouragement to think bigger and broader. And they're the ones more likely to say, well, why aren't we doing that? Maybe I shouldn't say that in front of Scott and Jim, but it's really exciting to see it happen. So is there anything in this presentation that was surprising to anyone?
I would be interested in knowing the transportation issue.
Jackie, could you turn your mic on, please?
And the transportation issue is huge.
Yes, the transportation issue is very huge. And I know Truman Heartland tried a couple of years ago to get something established and it failed miserably. And I know that we have the Oats Program right now, but there are so many residents that do not utilize medical services in Blue Springs. They utilize medical services at St. Luke's or KU or that type of thing. And I'd like to see some, something address that.
Currently, I'm participating with the Truman Heartland Community Foundation's Transportation Committee. And you're exactly right, they've looked at this before, they're looking even deeper now. This committee is focused on transportation for aging adults as well as disabled and disadvantaged youth. One of the things, one of the things that I think is really helping to move this initiative forward regarding transportation is we really have KCATAs full support at this point, and they're providing us with some good direction for alternative ways. And by way of example, the one that is a pilot program that we believe is going to be starting towards the end of July, it will not be offered at Blue Springs just yet. It's starting out in Raytown, Shure Creek, and Independence, and some small parts of Kansas City, is the taxi voucher program. And what that allows you to do is to be able to utilize a taxi for a really reduced rate. And it will, I think it's $5 per one-way trip, and it will take you as much as 20 miles, which again is to address this issue that we know that individuals within communities don't just need rides within their communities. Blue Springs is a great example of a community that has a lot of individuals that use either St. Luke's or Truman or Center Point outside the community. But it's not just those things. They also do some of their shopping outside of the community, although we try to discourage that. And they have other business that they do outside the community. So this is a program then that would allow them one avenue. But KCAT, KCATA has offered us several, several different types of programs similar to this where they're really more, what I like to refer to more as point of service. In other words, they will come to your door and from that point on, they will get you to the place that you want to go and back again at a very reduced price. So those are the kind of programs I think are being looked at now because it was pretty much determined that, that, you know, the idea of larger transportation systems in this area just aren't very economically feasible. Certainly commuter rail is something that's being looked at, but it's not necessarily geared towards that kind of a ride. It's really more of a, you know, you go get on the commuter train and you go, it's more, it's more jobs-related, like commuter rail is. And really that's similar with our bus transportation today. It too really is more jobs-related. It's not meant to get you around to some of these other places conveniently. So just thought I'd put that in there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Appeal.
I would like to address, I think Jackie and also Jim on this one, I have a couple of comments, is that number one is I think the St. Luke's special care that's going to open up here in Blue Springs will help alleviate some of that transportation issue, if you will, so that they don't have to go to St. Luke's or other sources for that kind of care. So hopefully they will alleviate that. My second comment would be, you know, I'd like to have seen, and this addresses your, some of the questionnaires that you, or the check sheet that you went through, or checklist, that we, it's nice to see that the elderly care has grown in Blue Springs along with Benton House, the Parkway, and I'm always confused in what the total name of the Parkway is, but that has just opened up. The only concern I have along that same venue is that those are all either assisted living or you can live in an apartment or things like that, but none of them provide end of life. And there's very few that do in Blue Springs, and I think that's going to have to be eventually addressed because there is really no place to go. And a lot of the places that you think you can go, you really don't because they won't accept you or there's restrictions or something like that. So just as a comment, I think that's going to really hit us in the face pretty quickly and needs to be addressed also. And thank you, Kathy, it was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you. We look very much forward to continuing our work with Blue Springs and the UD park charrette that's coming up. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is other business. Anybody have anything to bring forward? Nobody? Mr. Allen, nothing? Mr. Phillips?
I couldn't go all night and not say anything. I just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow evening at Pizza Shop Downtown Live is having a town hall meeting to discuss our previous accomplishments and our future goals. And we invite everyone who's interested in anything that might happen downtown to come down and visit with us and hear about what we've done and where we're going. It's from 6:30 to 8:30 at Pizza Shop.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other business? Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 27th. Seeing no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion from Commissioner Appeal, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Fairbanks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.